Central School District Board of Education meeting for October 3, 2022. Can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss contractual negotiations and matters specific to the employment of a particular corporation?
Some.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Can I have a motion back into public session?
Some.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Good evening, thank you everybody. Good evening, welcome to Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for October 3, 2022. Quickly stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the father of Jen Coppola, the mother of Angelo DeRosa, and our Yorktown coach, Wally Knapp.
Pledge of allegiance. To the Lord. To His great glory. To His great mercy. To His great wisdom. To His great peace. To His great mercy. 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 To His great peace.
Thank you all. We're going to start with good news, Ron.
Okay, welcome everyone. I'm sorry we were a few minutes late coming out of the executive session. It's wonderful to see an audience here with us this evening. We have a very special presentation from our high school to kick off our good news for the 22-23 school year. One of the areas of focus for our Board of Education this year is student wellness, overall wellness, beyond the nutritional wellness, looking at social, emotional health, and mental well-being, and so on and so forth. And our high school has really taken this charge very seriously, and there are some really wonderful things that are happening. So this evening, we have Mr. DiGennaro and his team here to present to the board and to our community about student connectedness in our high school, and some of the wonderful work that's happening in the high school. So I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. DiGennaro, and he has his team with us this evening as well. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter. Good evening, Mrs. Carbone, the Board of Education, district administrators. Always a pleasure to be here tonight to share high school great news beyond good news. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Cristioni, who's one of our assistant principals, who's done some great, great work since her arrival. She came here last December, hit the ground running, had a great transition plan to get to know people, students, adults, and our culture in the high school, our programs, and has really taken a good look with a fresh perspective when she came from the city to Yorktown. So she's presented to our faculty twice, has done a wonderful job. We have a plan for the rest of the years, Dr. Hatter alluded to, to continue to build our culture and enhance the already great programs that we have in the high school. So without further ado, I would like to introduce our assistant principals that are all here, our high school administrative team, Mr. Gallus, and Ms. Garrick, who has joined us to support Ms. Cristioni's great work. So thank you, and I turn it over to Ms. Cristioni.
Good evening. So we're going to start off, and I'm going to sort of run everyone through what we did on the first few days of school, when we had our staff in the building during Superintendent Conference Week, and then continued work that we're going to be doing over the course of the year. So I always like to start out with a quote to kind of give everyone inspiration. This is what I started with our faculty group with. Students don't care how much you know, they want to know how much you care. And so that's really kind of was the motivation for a lot of the work that we're doing, trying to again, really build relationships with students in the building. So by the end of the PL sessions that we've done, we wanted to identify some students who were possibly at risk, that could be socially at risk, academically at risk, who we felt did not necessarily have positive relationships with adults in the building. And then we wanted to kind of move forward to action planning. We wanted to brainstorm, we wanted to discuss ways that we could work together as a staff and a community to make sure that students really succeed. And I wanted to start off giving everybody an idea of what our community looks like. And so we looked at just the data of our school, how many students we have, the number of males, females, what grades they were in, how many students have some type of IEP or 504. And that was all really good starting points. And then I wanted to talk about some of our celebrations, some of the things that Yorktown is doing amazingly well. We are an academically high-performing district. Our students here really, really excel. They are getting into some of the best colleges in the United States, Barnard, Duke, Carnegie Mellon, Northeastern, Skidmore, Villanova, which is my place of my college. We have 14 students that went on to play Division I sports in Division I and Division II. We have 94% of students that were enrolled in a 204-year college, which is just an amazing statistic. 255 students for about 459 enrollments taking advanced placement courses. But then I also kind of wanted to reflect on while all of those things are huge celebrations, we do have a small subset of students who maybe are struggling to kind of fit in, find their place in the community, and are maybe not excelling to the point that they could be. And so I looked at some of our possible, our list of non-grads. I looked at the fact that some of our suspension data was not high, but we did have repeated student suspensions, and I started to kind of focus on a small subset of students who maybe aren't necessarily kind of feeling comfortable here and kind of taking the next step. And so today, what we started out with on that day, the first day of PL, was looking at some relationship mapping. And so I asked staff to place a dot to the left of any student's names. We had all current 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. If they had a positive trusting relationship with a student, they felt that that student would come to them if they had a problem, a concern, an issue. And then they had to place a dot to the right if they felt that that student was possibly at risk at some way. It could be academic, it could be personal, it could be any other reason. And once we sort of went through the process, staff really took it very seriously and wanted to think about how we could really focus on meeting and building relationships with these kids so that all Yorktown students succeed. That's really what we ultimately want to do. So on the right, I have a sample relationship map. I was obviously not going to have any of our current student data there. And so ultimately, again, positive relationships would be on the left, at-risk students at the right. And we were then going to use that information to sort of be very targeted in our approach to kind of helping support these learners. So students were really the forefront of this conversation, and then we wanted to obviously reflect and discuss, what characteristics do we see in our classrooms in these students? What do we need to do as educators to meet the needs of all of the learners and to best support them, and most importantly, build those positive relationships? And so ultimately, we started engaging in some deep reflection and some action planning. And the teachers came up with some really tangible things that they could do every day that could be non, sort of, they could commit to easily and were not going to bombard them or add on to their already very, very filled plates. Our teachers are very hard workers, but I didn't want to make this burden something that they couldn't manage. And they came up with amazing plans for our students. They really did. They came up with things like just building in a time for rapport and building in each of the classrooms, kind of like an SEL check-in. Teachers talked about standing and just greeting students, maybe picking a student every day that they wanted to have a conversation with in the hallway or before or after class. And we sort of just started slowly, really talking about and sharing some of the really great things we could do in a small community situation to create a better community feel in our classrooms. And then we wanted to take it widespread. So this is great what we can each individually do, but what could we do as a school community? And that's really where our work is continuing. So in our professional learning session today, we sort of now are thinking bigger picture. And so we are going to be focusing on really trying to get to know some of these students, continuing to build relationships with them, focusing on really continuing to have a targeted approach to build connections with all students in the building, creating departmental celebrations where students are brought in and sort of just getting to know their teachers in a more non-academic way, also having some focus groups for students and seeing kind of where they feel some of the relationships in the building are so we can really kind of hone in on how to move forward. Ideally, the whole goal is to really focus on how we can best support our learners, but more than that, we really want to make sure that our students feel connected because it is imperatively sort of proven that if students feel connected and feel like they have relationships in the building, they will succeed academically, and they will also be less involved in negative interactions and behavior. And so the hope is that by really working on building relationships, it's going to really support our school community at large. Overwhelmingly, staff seemed really on board. Over 96% of our staff felt like this workshop was a valuable use of their time. They felt that the sessions were really going to support their school-based work, and we're really working in a small way to try to help build relationships and also see an increase in all students succeeding at Yorktown. So that's my take. Thank you.
First, thank you. Now, I'm more familiar with this work because we have had multiple meetings on this, and certainly there's central office support of the work that's happening here, and we appreciate Mr. DiGennaro and his team taking on such an important topic within our schools. This dovetails with Board of Education areas of focus, it dovetails with some of the other programs that we have brought into our high school, including the Bright program, which I know our PPS department is quite proud of. And I look forward to hearing more updates on how the work progresses because I know we're at the opening stages. I love the concept of connecting all students to the high school and having students feel comfortable in their building. It's their school. It belongs to our students, so to have all of our students feel comfortable is a wonderful aspirational goal that we have. And I look forward to continuing the dialogue and periodic updates over the course of the year.
Thank you. Well, don't go anywhere. We may have questions for you.
I have a question.
So thank you. This was tremendous. I'm going to ask the board to go around and ask for the questions. Cheryl, did you have questions?
I think this is wonderful. I love it. I like the fact that you took a quantitative approach to a very subjective area. I think that's what we need in order to make any progress or to identify any developmental areas, and I just think it's, I think what you did is phenomenal, really. One of the questions I have, and you sort of answered it towards the end, and I wrote down the question really in the beginning, but you talked about connecting with some of the students who don't have a positive relationship with our staff, our teachers, whomever. What about the students who have no relationship with our staff at the high school?
So the group of students that we're going to be sort of trying to target ideally are students that either are not connected to adults in the building and also may not be at risk, because we don't, that's also something that is something that we wanted to identify. And it is alarming statistic. They're with over 200 staff members in the building and 1,100 students. The hope is every student should be connected to at least one adult. So this group of students is actually going to be made up of students that are definitely highly at risk and also don't have adult relationships, but also students that may not necessarily be at risk and don't necessarily have a positive adult relationship in the building. And I think also some of this, and where the focus group is going to come into play with the students, is sort of seeing, do students feel the same way? Because adults may feel this way, but do students feel like they truly have adult relationships? And I think we're trying to think about how we're going to approach that, but I think that that's really useful information as well.
Wonderful.
I think that hopefully.
Yes, absolutely, you did. Thank you. Reshmi?
I just want to say, I love the work, and I think this is the beginning of many great things, many great new things for the year at the high school, and I can't wait to see what comes next. So I do hope you'll come back, all of you, Mr. DiGennaro, yourself, and the entire team will come back and present to us the next part of this, the next step, because it is important to all of us here at the table, and I know to all of you too, so I would love to hear more. Thank you.
This work that I'm very committed to, and as a team, we're very committed to, so I think, and our staff is also really on board. This is professional learning that everyone overwhelmingly felt was really, really a good use of time, and they were excited about. So that's great to hear, and I think it shows how much of a great place Yorktown High School and the Yorktown School District obviously are.
Right, thank you. Pete?
Just that the commitment and passion that you presented is outstanding. I have no further questions, but you can just see it's kind of oozing out of you.
Anthony?
She's committed. We appreciate everybody like that. Thank you.
I just have one quick question. This is amazing. How are you going to be able to measure when connections?
So that was actually something when I had a conversation with Dr. Hatter at the start of this work, and he asked me that question. This is not necessarily going to be something that we can necessarily easily quantifiably measure. I think it's going to really depend on our targeted group of students, because they're possibly at risk or lacking adult relationships. It may just be a student that had no adult relationships in the building, now has arguably three adults in the building that they feel that they could go to. It might be that a student who was academically struggling is now passing all their classes at the end of the year. So I think it's going to really sort of be, once we ultimately decide on our target population, which should be in the next few days, because we did finish our last group of ninth graders today, it would then be really looking at it a case-by-case basis, richer than individual students. But it's not an easy answer to give you, yes, we had success here. And for some students, we may have more evidence of it, and others, we may not necessarily.
This is terrific. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is amazing work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Where are we now? We're going to go on to our first public comment, which there were no signos for, correct? Okay, so Ron, we're going to go back to you with the superintendent update?
Okay, thank you for that. So we can, we now move into the second month of the school year. It's tough to imagine that September is already behind us, but it's been everything that every September has been in the past. It starts with the transportation delays, it starts with some of the ups and downs in scheduling and hiccups that we experience, but I really do commend Patty Sauber and transportation, the staff in each of our schools, the administration in each of our schools, because we just work through all of those hiccups as we do every year. And it's not uncommon, and it's not unique to Yorktown, but it's something that certainly makes up a good part of September for us in operating the schools. Programs are up and running. We actually began after-school activities here in the middle school. Today was the first day for after-school activities at the middle school, and they'll continue to run, and we're excited about that and those opportunities for students. That information, parents of middle school, or that information was sent home by Mrs. Harrowards. It was also available during back-to-school night as well. If you need a copy of all of the clubs, and there are so many clubs, there literally is something for anyone to get involved in. You can reach out to the middle school main office for that information, but we're excited to have clubs up and running here at the middle school. Today was day one, and it was a great day one. With regard to some of the things that are on our mind, certainly the Board of Education areas of focus, we continue to focus on communications has been a high priority, improving our website, improving the newsletters, and getting more information out to the community has been something that we have really attended to and will continue to attend to. We're still working on the public access channel. There, I understand that there's a meeting coming up this week with a consultant to help us assess the equipment. It's old equipment, we're going to update that equipment, but once we do, we'll populate the channel with some really great content, from academic celebrations to art celebrations to athletic events, and I'll give the community a hint, anything you see on our public access channel, any game you see, we won. We'll win that game. So we'll air those highlights, we'll air some wonderful, just important information about our school district, just another way to reach our community, and that's important to us. We have a lot of work on the horizon, there's a ton of curriculum work that's happening. Ms. Ammerling has been super busy with the principals and teachers in the school building, looking at our K-5 writing, looking at the next phase of our Intu Math implementation, the social studies and science, certainly the Science 21, and keeping that moving. So many wonderful things happening, lots of things happening. You can check back often on our website. I would encourage you to check back often on our website. We're trying to keep any updated news at the top of the page. Also, if you are not connected to our school district and that you don't have children in the schools, and you don't receive the emails that I send, we make it very easy now for anyone who is interested in getting our information, our newsletters, to just go onto our website, you can click "How do I get the newsletter?", and it'll be right there for you to sign up for our newsletter. So we really are making a concerted effort to push information out. What I will share is space continues to be a consideration for us. We are limited by space, specifically at Brookside of Mohansick. It's something that I know the board has engaged in conversations, I look forward to continuing those conversations, but space at, specifically at K-3, although the high school administrations here, I'm sure they would say that they need some more space at the high school as well, but certainly K-3, we're running into some space limitations, and that's prior to any construction happening, that's prior to any developments that happen in town. We're experiencing some space limitations today, October 3.
Do we have any idea where the developments stand in town?
We had an update just during the summer, and I'll reach out and get a more timely update for where the.
And so what is the plan to try to address some of the space issues? Have you laid out a plan as to where we go next?
We will be doing that. That's something that we had discussed. We've worked with our architects and construction manager to look at some internal options to see if there's any reconfiguration of space that can happen first. Right now, we're pretty close to exhausting all of that existing space that we have, so now it's just a matter of looking at what other options do we have?
Okay.
So Dr. Hatter, could you speak to the reasons behind that? So, and I know we have shared enrollment numbers, recent numbers in the past, and then there's programmatic constraints also, so if you can shed some light on that?
Yes, absolutely, and thank you for that. So we have increased enrollment. That's something that is a reality for us. We see the enrollment increases over the summer. The needs of the students are such where we have opened an 812 classroom at Mohansick. It's their first time having an 812 program at that level, and that's a classroom. And it's servicing our children, our students, in their home district, which is so important to us, but it's space, and it's room. We also would love to be able to offer an eSteam lab, and to be able to offer students opportunities to go into the library and the science lab and some of the other rich experiences that our children deserve. However, at some point, we're going to get to the point where those specialty areas need to turn into regular classrooms, and we lose programmatic value. So we're seeing increased enrollment, we're seeing student needs where we have to carve out space to service those needs, and then we're seeing programmatic components, and those three are coming together in a way that the existing infrastructure is strained to meet.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay. Well, you know what, we have to, we have to address it, and we can't hide it, so it is what it is. All right, board action items. Can I have a motion to approve the September 12 board meeting minutes?
Some.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the treasures report for July 2022?
Some.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the claims audit report for August 2022?
Some.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And can I have a motion to approve the extra classroom activity report for July 2022?
Some.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Policies. Can I have a motion to delete the following policy and regulations from the policy manual? 6110-R budget planning regulation, 6740 purchasing procedure, 6740-R purchasing procedure regulation.
Some.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The board is going to conduct a first reading on the following policies and regulations. They're listed below. Did anybody have any questions or comments on any of them?
No.
No? Okay. And then the policy committee conducted a review on the following policies on September 13, 2022, and there were no changes, and that was 6240 investments and 6,700 purchasing. We're up to personnel. Can I pull one out? Is it okay if I pull one separate in personnel? So can we have a motion to appoint Denise Sandor as the assistant principal at Brookside Elementary School?
Some.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Ron, did you want to say something?
Just congratulations to Dr. Sandor. She has been with our district for so many years and has done such a great job for us in so many regards, and has been a leader within our district even without the formal title and formal role. I do want to share, we went through a very rigorous process, and it was intensive, and we met with a lot of candidates. And I come before you tonight telling you that Dr. Sandor was absolutely the best candidate with whom we met. She impressed us at every pass. I learned a lot about Denise through the process, which I thought was very interesting, and we had multiple meetings throughout the course of this process. And Denise, congratulations. I know you'll do wonderful things at Brookside.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, we'll do the rest of that personnel agenda. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. We have other compensation, we have extra duty, that's a lot of it. We have removal from the substitute list, it's a resignation of Denise Sandor as school psychologist. We have classified personnel appointments, we have civil service appointments, additions to the substitute list, removals from the substitute list.
Some.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Business office. A motion to approve the attached LightPath LLC service order for internet services beginning November 1, 2022 through November 1, 2025, based on the OGS contract.
Some.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to accept the following change orders from Grace Contracting for the summer 2022 district-wide improvement projects?
Some.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? We have a tax rule correction. Be it resolved that the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education approves the Yorktown, Town of Yorktown's correction of the 2022 tax rule for the property owned by Mark Levine located in, I'm not going to read his address out loud, and identified on the 2020 tax rule as Section 37.15, Block 1, Lot 57, and be it further resolved that the Assistant Superintendent for Business is authorized to sign the application.
Some.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Special Ed, can I have a motion to arrange the following placements as of October 3, 2022?
Some.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the attached amendments to the following vendor agreements for the 22-23 school year, and they are listed below?
Some.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Gifts, grants, and donations. A motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations, and the following supplies, a lengthy list of supplies from the Maxwell, Dine, Pied Piper.
Some.
Second.
Discussion. Ron, do you want to explain this?
The owners and operators of Pied Piper Preschool, which is on 202 here in town, approached me with a large donation of school supplies that they received from a retailer, and they offered us the opportunity to take supplies and distribute them as needed to our students and staff, and we, of course, accepted that opportunity because we have students and staff who would benefit from having those supplies available to them. So I really just thank Pied Piper, and Max, and Kathy for reaching out to us to just provide such a wonderful service. He does believe that this will happen more often. I'd love to get these supplies before school starts so that we can distribute them to families prior to school starting, but we just received the donations, I believe, Friday afternoon. It's here on the agenda for your approval. We took inventory, and then now we can begin to disperse those supplies. But thank you so much to our friends at Pied Piper.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Very generous, thank you. Okay, we're up to board comments. Anthony?
I'm good.
Pete?
I'm good.
Reshmi?
I'm good, thanks.
Cheryl?
I'm good, thank you.
I am as well. We are up to the final public comment. We have a speaker tonight, so I am going to read my public comment speech. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. Speakers were asked to sign up. Our Policy twelve-thirty, Public Participation at Board Meetings, clearly states we do not allow discussion involving or using the name or situation of individual district personnel or students. Anyone who speaks in violation of our policy will immediately give up their right to continue to speak. Speakers are expected to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Anyone using abusive or inflammatory language, using offensive language, or in any way causing a disruption will give up their right to speak. Members of the audience are expected to maintain civility and respect for the views of others. We do not allow calling out, clapping, or disruptions from the speaker, from the audience. We will be tracking each speaker's time, and towards the end of your three minutes, we will warn you to conclude. If you fail to abide by the three-minute warning, we will turn off your microphone. And I know there's only one speaker, and it was not directed specifically at you, it is just something we read at every meeting. So Paula Yakov?
Good evening. My name is Paula DeRogier Yakut, and I'm kind of bummed that Mr. DeGeneres and the other team left because what I actually wanted to speak about, and I was asked to speak about by several members of our community, is the socio-emotional needs of our kids. So it ties right in with what they were talking about, actually. So the issue that some of us are having is the disconnect with sports. The social emotion, and even in the presentation, I didn't hear anything about the social-emotional connection with the coaches. There seems to be significant disconnect, and it would be awesome if there was a connection between the coaches and social-emotional with what they're doing in the high school. Right now, there are twenty-two, maybe twenty-three kids on a JV soccer team. Why? It's ridiculous. These kids go to practice every day. The parents at the game today were like, oh, there's only five minutes left. How do they know there's five minutes left? Because their kid goes in. It's, the kid is going, there should never be that. As a freshman parent, I have twins that are freshmen. As a freshman parent, had I received an email that said, you know, look, we've got forty-eight kids that have tried out for the team, and in order to have two, field two teams, we need to have sixty kids or fifty kids or whatever, like, let's draw these kids in. Let's send emails, let's communicate to parents. Because I would have said to my kid, like, look, I would have said to Adam, who is sometimes my pain in the neck kid, that doesn't want to play soccer, Adam, they need to field two teams, you're going to go. Like, and he would have been like, yeah, okay, whatever. And he would have done it. But I didn't know that there was an issue, so now there's twenty-four kids on this JV soccer team. Last year, I don't know if anyone is aware of this, my daughter was a senior last year, this social-emotional issue that took place during the girls' basketball season, I'm still trying to help my daughter recover from that year. The seniors were, it was really a horrible season for them as seniors. This year, I went to senior night for the girls' soccer team. Three seniors didn't start, three seniors didn't play until the last five minutes of the game, and they were up three-zero.